Hi there.
Hi Karen.
Hello. Hello.
Who's that with us?
So then up here, you can do microphone, but down here mute it, you can mute it, you can stop videos like if you just. Face showing. And then if you want to leave the meeting. Did you see the dogs?
Hi Amanda.
Karen, how are you?
Good. Did you have a good Labor Day?
I did, relaxing. What about you?
Same thing, little downtime.
Yeah. Hi Bob.
Hi Karen.
Hi Chuck.
Hello everyone.
Hello.
Hey Chuck.
Okay, we got Bob, we got Amanda.
We don't, I have Ryan.
No Ryan, and how about?
I think I just saw Ryan drive by.
Uh, how about Gary?
You haven't seen Gary. Hi Ryan.
There's Ryan. There's Gary. Okay. And Lisa Record, you're keeping a record?
I sure am.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
We got the big guy filling in from MRB. Big Greg. Greg will try to keep it under four hours tonight. I think the last one you sit on sat down was the four hour marathon.
He always gets the good ones.
Yeah, we had to pick a night for the big buck guy too. You know, hundred dollar an hour guy.
I'm hoping we can get out of here in less than an hour with this agenda.
Okay, I'll try to go as fast as I can. Alright, well let's start with the pledge allegiance. If you could put the flag up. Very cool, get going. Okay, would everybody join me in pledging allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, welcome everyone. This is the September 8th meeting of the Town of Canada planning board. Let me go through the roll call, make sure we got everybody. I'm Chuck Euler, I'm the chairman. Looking for Karen Blasey.
Here.
Ryan Stachak.
I am here.
Ryan, Gary.
I'm here.
Bob La Course.
Here.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Amanda Van Laken.
Hi, Amanda's here.
Okay, filling in for John Robitella tonight is Lisa Record. Thank you Lisa for joining us and filling in for Lance Brayban. The MRB group is Greg Nuttallie. And on the controls is Eric Cooper. Our town planner. Okay. Let me go through quickly what the procedure is for tonight. And let's follow this as closely as possible, make things go much quicker. We will have the applicant for each application make a presentation. The board will then follow up with questions and comments. We'll go back to the applicant, see if there's any further responses from him. And then we'll open it up to the general public for anyone who would like to speak. And then we will deliberate and take action on the application this evening. If you want to talk, please raise your hand via Zoom and make sure you give us your name and your address. It would help Lisa keep track of who's talking. And the first thing I want to do right out of the boat is is take the privilege of the floor. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. Now's the time to do so. So if you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the, notice the publication of the first public hearing we're going to have this evening was published in the was published in the Daily Messenger. And I don't have the date in front of me, but it was duly posted, so it has been advertised. And with that being said, I will open the public hearing for the Venezia Group, owners of property at Quadruple Lake Breeze Way. They're seeking a subdivision approval for a two lot subdivision. Anthony, are you there?
Looks like Rocco's with us.
Oh, Rocco, okay.
I don't know if he's still kind of connecting. It looks like he just joined us a second ago. Rocco, are you there?
Okay, well he, why don't you fill us in Eric as to what's happening? I think this is something we've all seen before.
Yes. Planning Board in Fox Ridge, you guys, I'm sure know this at the back end.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I will quickly go over kind of what happened the last time. So um, the last time you guys had seen this. Uh, this is the map that was approved. Actually, that's not, anyways, apologies, it's this one. Um, so what was two lots right here, two smaller lots was combined into one and made quite a bit larger. So this is kind of how the lot legally looks right now to Ontario County. Although Encore has not yet been updated, it still looks kind of like its old arrangement. So anyways, this is how it is right now.
Chuck, I just want to let you know I'm here, Rocco.
Okay, we were just having Eric give a briefing as to what you were doing. If you want to take it, pick up the ball and run with it, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Okay, so you guys have seen this way too often.
We said that.
So the five lot, the four lot subdivision, this was a five lot subdivision, it went to a four lot, and now we want to, we had, we had these two lots sold as wanted and the people because of COVID backed out of the deal, so then we ended up selling to the MacRee's over at MacRee's Deli. And he wants to build one for himself and one for his daughter, so here we are in front of you to put it back into two. That's pretty much what we're doing, pretty straightforward.
Okay, that sounds pretty simple. Anybody from the board have any questions?
This is Bob, I did have a question. I gave it to Eric, but I'm going to ask Rocco there. Rocco, why are you putting a 40 foot setback on the side on Lot 48?
Just to accommodate the people to the south to make it a little bit bigger, nicer, and you know.
Is still viable lot to build a house in that area?
Well, it's 90 feet wide at the building line, so yeah.
Okay, alright. I just noticed that was different, but.
We're just trying to accommodate the Webbers and the Sodigis, the Bowens and Wardenskis trying to, you know, not have something right in their backyard.
Copy. Okay, that's good for me.
So we're going to have four driveways onto the private drive, right? We have Anthony's and these two lots and the one across the street. Okay, and the the other lot goes into the Hammerhead, right? We're on to Breeze, Lake Breeze.
Yep, yep, yeah. Number 57 is going to be accessed off the town, the town ownership.
Okay. Okay, I think we, I think in the resolution, and I don't want to get ahead of myself here, but for the development, ultimate development of lots 48 and 49, when the Crees come back and they want to build their homes, I guess we'll want to see those site plans.
I think I put that note on the map.
Okay, I saw it somewhere. Yep.
Yeah, I kind of offered it up.
Okay. And they, the buyer is aware of the, the larger setback on Lot 48?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We've already got their site plan or house position, so you know, they in turn wanted to keep their house away from them houses, so. You know.
Okay. And I think we took care of the last time through this, maybe the first time through this, the drainage in the back going to those rear, rear yard inlets in the back of West Ridge Run, right?
Yeah, right where that cursor is.
We can get in that more. Yeah, yeah, we can get in that more when we get into the site plans, too.
Yep.
Alrighty, I'll open it up to anybody in the audience who would like to add anything. Okay, hearing none, I want to go back to the board. I wasn't sure if I gave the board enough. I know Bob had a question. Anybody else have any?
Hold on, Mr. Kurtz is raising his hand. He accepted, you there? Can you, Clark?
Yeah.
You keep muting and unmuting.
No, I just, just have a question. Does this have any effect on the amount that the property, eventual property owners will have to pay in terms of the association fees?
Well, I would say if anything, it's adding more properties that would contribute. I think that was a concern when they consolidated, it would be one less property. Now we're going back to the with the two properties, it would be back to the way it was originally. So again, Mr. Kurtz, it's Clark Kurtz, and where do you live, sir?
I'm at 5023 West Ridge Run.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't, Chuck, I didn't understand the question.
Well, I had looked at what I could figure out from the drawings that were on the website, but really this is all kind of new to me. And so I was just wondering if it affected what the homeowner's fees would be or not, and I think I was given the answer that there's no, particularly no impact.
So, so the homeowner fees are fixed lot are per lot, right? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that was determined in the past.
Yeah.
So, so the way I see it is the lot home fees are per lot. And if the question from Clark has to do with the number of ultimate lots, we had 155 proposed, we're going to be three lots shy, so 152. So I think the question is, the answer to the question is, we're going to be three less lots than we were originally. When we get done with the next section, which we're going to look at in two weeks. Does that answer the question? Is that what the question was?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the audience? Okay, I'll go back to the board. Any questions from the planning board members? Okay, not hearing anything. I am going to close the hearing. And if Eric, if you put the resolutions up, I think we're looking at an unlisted action as far as seeker, which I question why we had to do it unlisted again, but Lance fairly clearly described to me why it has to be done, since it is a subdivision, a re-subdivision. So we're looking at a seeker type, excuse me, seeker unlisted. It's got the company modules, parts one, two, and three, and I don't think there's any issues there. And we get the right dates, and since it is unlisted and involves the modules, can I get a separate motion on this, please?
Yeah, this is Gary. I will go ahead and make a motion that we reviewed seeker for CPN 20-059. And we determined that there is, made a determination of non-significance for this subdivision plan.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Before we move forward, just real quickly, can Greg or Lance update the resolution so that it shows Lisa Record as the acting secretary of the board for these resolutions tonight?
Yeah, as soon as I can figure out where it says John. Anywhere on here. Does it say anywhere on this resolution where it references a John?
Yes, at the bottom.
Oh, okay, I got you.
The testament, yeah. Yeah, okay. While you're pulling, it'll probably, Greg, it'll probably affect all the resolutions we do tonight. Okay, while you're pulling up the site plan or the subdivision, I should say that we did not have to go to the Ontario County Planning Board with this application. Jim Fletcher had no comments regarding it. There were no comments from the sewer district. So those were the outside agencies that looked at it, did not have any comments. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for the subdivision approval for single-stage two lot subdivision.
I'll go ahead and do that again. This is Gary. So I'll make a resolution to approve a single-stage subdivision plan for 0000 Lake Breeze Way. CPN 20-059, subject to the three conditions as stated in the resolution.
I'll second again.
Thank you. Noting the conditions include the requirement that lots 48 and 49 be subject to site plan review at a future date, and also the the payment in lieu of fee, in lieu of set aside parkland for the two lots upon the drawing down of the building permits. Okay, with that second and that motion, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Rocco. And thank you.
Thank you guys, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz, for tuning in.
Yeah, I'm in the meeting. I just got it. I was fooling around on the phone.
Okay, I think.
Rocco, you're not muted.
Rocco's left the room.
Okay, good job.
Rocco has left the room. Okay, we're looking at CPN 20056. Bill Grove representing Eileen Batesalts, an owner of property at Quadruple Zero Nap Road. It's a single-stage site plan for the construction of a new single-family dwelling on a vacant lot that was created at our last meeting. So Bill, I see you're on the phone.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, and well, if you can tell us what the Bateshalts would like to do, we'd certainly appreciate it.
Sure, we're, right now the Bateshalts own a pretty good chunk of property. And they've split off or intend to split off almost 11 acres for their daughter and son-in-law to build a new house. And so that's the, the application that's, that we're presenting tonight. It's approximately 250 feet wide and a really long. It's approximately 250 feet wide and a really long property going north-south. The second sheet of my plan shows the, you know, the relation of where the house is in that upper-left corner to the size of the lot. So it's a fairly large lot. There's really only one good spot to, to build the house, and that's where we're proposing to put it. So we meet all setbacks. There's an existing driveway cut there that we're going to reuse for the new house. Septic will be conventional remarkably, but we're happy we found that, and it needs a new well, or a, a well. There is no well there now, but that's, we're going to service the water. So other than that, it's pretty straightforward. It's a really easy site to build on. We're not in these steep slopes. We're staying out of the steep slope area. So.
Stay in other woods?
Out of the woods. For the most part, there's a small amount of clearing for the septic in the front of the lot that we've got to, that we've got to do. But for the most part, it's in the existing open area. There's a gravel driveway that goes back with a parking, parking area, so we're going to be just to the east of that parking area with the new house.
Okay. Board members, any comments, questions?
This is Bob. I had questions I asked out of Eric, just to have them posted in the many meetings, minutes, and that was just to, being a separate tax number than the original tax number of the 50 some odd acres there. And I understand that's going to happen afterwards, but just to make a note of that. Other than that, I had no problems. I went out there the other day, looked at it, looked pretty simple.
Let's see, status of the recording of the subdivision.
We are waiting for plans to sign, essentially.
Should any action this evening be conditional upon the subdivision being signed and recorded, or? And maybe it should be.
That's probably a good idea. I'm not sure. Yeah, I would say either, whether you want to condition it based on signatures or permits not being issued prior to subdivision being filed.
I, I would think in this case, it would be conditional upon a subdivision before the plan gets signed, because I, you don't want to sign a site plan for a lot that doesn't exist theoretically, so. And I don't think that should be a challenge for you, Bill, should it?
No, I'm just worried, worried a little bit about the timing of it. I know they're anxious to, to get building on this, as everybody is, but they're, you know, currently living in a, in a RV, and they want to get into the house as soon as possible. So, you know, I don't think it'll hold up anything too much, but I know they're very anxious to get started.
Well, right, right now, the, I mean, the resolution has a condition on it that says prior to issuance of a permit, subdivision plans that were prepared and approved have to be signed. So that's a condition right now.
Okay, good catch. I, I didn't recall reading that, but.
Number two.
Yeah, well, the ball's in the applicant's court as far as getting it recorded. Faster they do it, the sooner they can draw down permits, I guess, so, so it's.
There really isn't anything to the plans that need to be added, other than the note about it being buildable. So as far as recording the subdivision, just has to add that note and get signed by you, Chuck, and then it's ready to go. Really nothing standing in the way.
So I, I would suggest that they do that with all due haste. Get the plan in. Getting back to site plan, Bill, did you cover our standard paving from the edge of road to right away?
Yeah, yep, the.
Yeah, I, I thought I, I didn't have it as a, have it missing, so I assumed you had it on there.
Yep, it's on there in the upper-left corner there, to be paved within 30 feet of the edge of Nap Road.
And looking at Tyler's email, the 28th, it appears the plans are, if not approved, all but for the septic system.
Correct.
And Jim Fletcher, he said that they had put a driveway covered in there. Is that, was that put in recently, or?
I'm, I'm not sure.
The driveway was?
It does exist.
Okay.
It's brand new when I was out there two days ago.
Okay, well. Jim is out ahead of things. Good for him.
I think they may have widened it from what it was existing. It was pretty narrow.
Okay. Well, ECB, Eric, you had said that based on what you recall, they were happy, quote, happy that the, with the place, in the placement and the design, so I guess they're, they're on board. We do have an ag data statement from the applicant. County Planning Board was not required to review it. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question or make a comment? Okay.
Is that, is that subdivision our map, Bill?
Yeah.
Freeland Paranello, I think.
Yeah. I'll make sure they get them printed up tomorrow.
Awesome, thanks.
Yep.
Thanks, Brendan. Okay. Anything else on the board? If not, we can move, move ahead to a type-two seeker.
I, I have, I have a comment, Chuck.
You're right.
Bill, if you could just, I don't know if the owners are on the call right now. Are they on the call? We just go represent. So I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up. This summer and last summer, we had a pretty intense gypsy moth outbreak. And with beautiful forest, I know that your families been on the property for a while. There is an opportunity through the, the most recent Town of Canadawood newsletter to learn about the gypsy moth, but then also there's an opportunity for neighbors to sign up through the DEC Forester by the name of Bryce June. If you're interested to learn about aerial spraying to, about the gypsy moth for next year, so I just wanted to kind of give you the heads up on that. And then also, that same person, Bryce June, as, as a service available through the federal government allocation through the New York State DEC, you're allowed to have a free forest management plan developed. If you're interested in that, I would encourage you to steward that forest down there. And with that, if Eric puts up the, I'll, I'll, I'll move a motion here.
Why don't you bundle it, Brian?
And we're going to bundle this. Let them make a motion to approve CPN 20-056 on Nap Road as a seeker resolution, a type-two action. And also the site plan approval resolution with the six conditions as presented.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Gary will second that.
Thank you. Okay, there's the, number two is the, what we discussed, okay.
Who was that that seconded that?
I think.
Thank you.
Prior to the issuance of a permit, which permit are we talking about, Eric? Just talking about building permit?
That's not clear, so I assume, I would always interpret that as the initial permit, which might be soil erosion or something like that.
Yeah, why don't we make it similar to number six, where it's, the set aside. It's part of the building, part of the building permit, so, yeah, just, if you would add the word building in there, that would be more, more clear.
Which condition?
Okay, so you have a, have a motion and a second. The resolution will require the changes from John to Lisa, but other than that, I will take, make a, take a motion or take a vote on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks. Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Have them get that subdivision. All right, moving on to our next application, which is CPN 20057. Mark's Engineering, representing David Ultimus, owner of property at 1900 Sand Hill Road. He's seeking a single-stage site plan approval for the construction of a new single-family home. And on a vacant piece of land. So Brennan, you want to tell us about Mr. Ultimus?
Yeah, good evening. So the plan is to build a new single-family house on a lot. There's already an existing barn on it. It's quite set back off of the road. Nearly 600 feet. The, there's the existing barn, existing driveway. It's got an existing culvert there. We will be building the house, bringing electric to it, starting to, putting a septic system in in the wayback, so we get gravity to the septic, they're not pumping it. And they putting in a well. There is a wetland in the back of this site, which is Paddle Ford Brook, but that is the buffer line there that Eric is pointing out.
Eric, so this email, which the planning board saw about the, from the DEC, the board probably didn't see the email that you forwarded me earlier today that, you know, the DEC kind of accepted the comments and revisions or whatever that you guys had made. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd say they, they don't say it, but they said it, that they're approved of the, the changes we made. But they're not a regulating agency, is what they say, basically, so. Or not directly involved in the approvals, so.
And the reason they were involved, the DEC, unlike other applications where it's mostly just Tyler, was because of the wetlands?
Yes.
Yeah, just like an FYI, sending it to them.
Yeah, they did bring up, and I guess it was something came up at PRC, is why is the system sit so far back on the property of a long lateral run to get to it?
Gravity.
Need that much run to get the fall?
Yeah.
Oh.
We'll go as far as we got to go to get gravity to the septic system. No, it's, 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 we got the correct pitch. I mean, we did a full topo survey on the site, so we know these are actual grades shot. And if we were, we wanted to put it off to the, just to the right of the house there, but there's that, there's a stream that runs along that right boundary there. I think that's eastern boundary, northern, northeastern. Anyways, there's a stream there, so we got to be 100-foot setback off of that. And we looked at pumping it, but then, you know, we, we really would like to avoid pumps at all, at all costs, so. I mean, this is just, it's just the cost of pipe to get back there. It's really not that big a deal.
Okay, I'll take any questions from the board?
Chuck, it's Bob. I get, I got to ask the question, because I guess the barn is pre-existing, so it's okay to be in the front of the house?
We eliminated that rule.
Oh.
You know that. Yeah, a number, I guess it was two or three years back, we eliminated the rule that requires, yeah, that would require detached buildings wherever in the AR2 zoning district to be in the side or rear yard. So now they can be in the front yard as long as it meets the setback requirements of 60 feet.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
What is the need for the big round driveway? Just being that it's, you know.
Yeah, he's a, he, he's, he's, they do farming here, so there's, there's some agricultural needs, and he has a large truck with trailer. So he wants the ability to turn around without having to jockey his trailer around. And then also, he want, there's a door, there's a garage in that side of the barn there that he wants to be able to back into, so. And, um, yeah.
Okay. That 48-inch pipe that carries the stream into the driveway, that's adequate size. It's obviously looks pretty big, so, but I don't know what the watershed is.
It, well, it's been there for several years now. And it has not shown any signs of failure. And so I would say it's adequate, yes.
Or surcharge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chuck, you're muted.
Chuck, you're muted, yeah.
Food's cooking in the background, so I tried to cook. Yeah, note, note, note number three talks about public water for the site.
That must, that's our mistake.
Okay. I guess that proves that I read the plan.
Hey. That's good. We'll make corrections to that.
Okay. We have the 100-foot setback from the stream. I think you show that from the center of the stream. There's, is there any floodplain associated with that stream? Your notes say there is not.
Back in the Paddle Ford Brook, if you zoom in on that overall property, there it shows where the approximate floodplain is. It's follows the DEC wetland boundary.
Okay, then I guess you have to look at note two. Stating there's no, no floodplain on the site, Brian.
Okay. Those will be corrected.
Okay, anyone out in virtual land want to ask a question or make a comment from the public? Okay. Jim Fletcher, it reminded you that the water is Canadaqua Farmington Water District. We do have an ag statement that was filed on August 12th. ECB was, really had no comments. DEC, we talked about County Planning Board was not required to review the application. That's it? Anybody have anything else? Okay, well, if that being said, it is another type-two, so we, we can do two for the price of one if somebody wants to make a motion.
This is Bob. I'll make a motion to accept the seeker resolution, a type-two action at CPN 20-057, and the site plan approval resolution at the same CPN 20-057 at 1900 Sands Hill Road.
Seven conditions.
Oh, with the seven, thank you, Eric, with the seven conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay, and Brendan, you'll take care of those two notes.
Yeah, I wonder about the, just questions for you guys. The requirements of the driveway to be paved, the existing driveway, is there any way we can remove that?
Within the township right-of-way, that's, that's all. It's not the whole driveway.
No, I know, it's just that it's right-of-way.
Uh, no, there's no way you can remove that. We've been, we've been following that policy. Jim has been very happy with the way it's worked. It's saved a lot of maintenance, the stone being drug out onto the roads or washing out of the road, so. No, you'll have to live with it.
Are the applicants on the line with us? Are they owners? I see you guys.
I think they are.
Feel free to talk.
I had a question. On the, can it be pavers, like paving stones, instead of black asphalt?
Yeah, it could be. I, it's gonna be more of a maintenance issue for you. Might, might wind up costing you more money in the long run, but yes, I could say some sort of, if you make it a little more pervious, that would be great. But it's a, I'm sorry, it can't be, it can't be just loose stone gravel.
I'm sorry, this, this is Ryan Staychak here. Can we, can we ask Jim Fletcher these questions? Because I, I would feel more comfortable with Jim being comfortable with that. I mean, I don't know what the, I'm thinking of the plows, plow damage. And I wouldn't want the town to be liable for any damage to nice pavers. You know what I mean? Like, the patio pavers are, it's a whole system in place, and I'm, I'm familiar with the, how they put them in. And I wouldn't want the town to be in a situation where they, we damaged someone's property, I guess. Is that appropriate, Chuck?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can speak fairly well on this, because it came up in the, when we redid the site design manual. And that was the condition that Jim wanted to see included. The pros and cons of replacing it with pavers. There's more maintenance, I would think, with the pavers. I would think the blacktop would be pretty, you lay it down and you're, you're done. So you folks, you were thinking about stone initially, just gravel. And so now you're thinking about pavers out at the right-of-way?
Well, I just didn't like the idea of asphalt, but if you required it, I just wanted to know, like, if you do concrete or pavers or something like that, instead of blacktop. If blacktop's the best way to go, I'll just go with blacktop and.
Hey Chuck?
Yeah.
Hey Brennan, is that driveway below our road, or is it sloped into our road?
It slopes away.
So that a plow wouldn't be damaging their driveway?
I can't say whether it would or not, yeah.
So that's what I was wondering. My driveway faces, slopes down, no damage, so I was wondering that there'd be any chance of damage with those, so lesson.
How about this? Can I change my motion to include another condition that if the applicant wishes to, to have a different apron on the road, that it's approved later in the process by the planning board and, and the planning board chairperson? Is, you know what I mean? Just to make the process easy. I just want to make sure that Jim's okay with it. I mean, the owner seems like they want a nice apron.
I'll just, I'll just put asphalt. I just had a question, sorry.
Sorry, I asked.
Yeah. I'm trying to accommodate you, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Or Ryan, just, just make a condition, it's gotta be approved by Jim.
Yeah, I mean, if they, they want to make it hard. I'm sorry to keep that.
On it anyway, so.
Okay, can we just add a condition that number eight is, any, any changes to the apron are just approved by, by Jim Fletcher?
And we'll leave it up to you folks, what you.
I think, I think I actually only seconded that motion, so it would be, I think, I think Bob Lacor.
I made the motion.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion. They had a further condition regarding the driveway. Or it can be as part of that condition that addresses the driveway.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend you change condition number three right now, and just add to the end, where it says, site plans are to be revised to identify all portions of driveway located with the town right-of-way are to be paved in, in, and approved by highway department supervisor. Or whatever that, his title is.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, so we have a amended motion and a second.
Yep.
For both the seeker and the site plan approval. Any further questions, comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? All right, folks, you're off and running.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get your, I'm sorry, did we get your name and address? I see M. Williams on the prompter.
David Ultimus and Marcy Williams.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome to the town, if you did. Well, I guess, do you live here already?
No.
No.
Again.
Not yet.
You'll love it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's turn the, turn the page and look at the approval of the minutes from back on August 25th. Somebody want to give me a motion?
I moved at the minutes from August 25th. They're adapted as they are.
And did I hear a second?
Bob.
Bob, thank you. Karen moved, Bob seconded, all in favor? Aye.
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 Posed. Okay, referrals from town board. Our friends at the ordinance committee. We're looking at water course setback, local law. Eric, you want to tell us?
So focus initially on this 220-9. And how it currently reads is, except as otherwise stated, no structure shall be built within 100 feet of a bed of a stream carrying water on an average of six months of the year. That is a very difficult or impossible clause to enforce.
Yeah, it is.
We don't keep track or measure that. And if you, if you read it, you know, on an average of six months in a year. So you're gonna have to measure it for multiple years and average it out, which again, we don't do. I contacted the DEC to see if they had that information. I contacted Kevin Olveny to see if they had that information. Neither of them do not. And so to eliminate this essentially unenforceable provision of town code, how it will, is proposed to be read is, no structure shall be built within 100 feet of a protected water course. Protected water course is essentially the definition from the New York State DEC, which you can read above there, which is any water course, it's classified by the DEC largely, down to class D. So all of those streams would require 100-foot setback. This is essentially the intent and how we've been enforcing that provision for a number of years. But now it's, or now it would be worded more appropriately.
Eric, how are we gonna know that, then, if those streams are protected? Is that gonna be on the maps?
Yeah, it already is on the maps. Essentially, the DEC has maps of their classified streams. And so essentially, what would require 100-foot setback is in reference to those DEC classified stream maps.
How, how close is that map to our, our NRI water course map?
It should be the same thing. They use those data layers for those maps.
So anyone could go to the NRI map and look at that and determine if there's a stream? And then it makes it simple for you, Eric, to just make sure that any structure is 100 feet from it.
Yep.
Yep, that's a lot different than being out there every rainstorm.
Eric, you're way too fast on that mouse.
There you go. Eric has veins. So they're all the Class C streams, which.
There's, I don't think there's any other classification or classified streams in the town. There's no, like, Class A or B, so they just end up all being Class C.
A lot of the streams are only active some of the time, depending on the time of year, because I walk a lot, and that's something I do notice. So I don't know how you factor that into something like this.
That's kind of how it would read, or if you, the pre, or the existing code language allows for kind of that, I don't want to say it's like subjective, but those, there's changes. You know, that sometimes it flows, sometimes it doesn't.
Right.
This is just entirely related to how the DEC has classified their streams.
Okay. I was just being practical.
Yeah, I mean, some of these streams are, you know, not year-round.
Right.
You know, they only flow certain times of heavy rain and otherwise, you might otherwise call them like a drainage swell, but they're still classified by the DEC. So they're not like always carrying water.
And that's deep stream buffer 150 feet, the same that we just looked at? I thought you said it was 100.
No, the, the open space plan. I think it, I think it said that they wanted to see a buffer of 150 feet. The existing code is only 100 feet.
Yeah.
And so there, there is a difference between those two.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay.
Okay. So Eric, is the board looking, or the ordinance committee, I guess, is this an official request to comment from the board? Or is this just an update from the ordinance committee?
This is an official request for comment, so again, the process is that the ordinance committee creates their draft, makes it acceptable to the committee, then refers it out to comments to the various boards. That's where we are right now. After those comments are received, they'll make any necessary changes. And then it will go to the town board for potential public hearing and adoption.
Okay, does someone want to craft a response to the board? I think, I think we realize it's certainly a more efficient way of determining where, which water courses are being protected and how, so.
Yeah, I would, I would just simply say that, that we concur with the proposed changes being recommended by the board, by the ordinance committee.
I could second that.
Okay, Eric, if you could develop something along that line, everybody that's in favor of that, say aye.
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 And, yeah, I think, obviously, a lot of stress that we feel it's a much, much more efficient way of looking at things, rather than the archaic way we had before.
Good job, Eric. I like how we just use, there's already laws by the DEC. That's what we're gonna use. It's very simple. It makes it a lot easier for code enforcement. It's good government in action right there, buddy.
You know, reinvent the wheel.
That's right.
Okay. ZBA has not asked us to look at anything. Nothing from Chris Jensen. We're gonna do a current release for Mr. Mink. I guess my question, Eric, is, what was this for? Was this, I know this is the property we were involved with, the falling of the trees, and is this related to?
Right.
This related to that or something else?
Built the house over there.
Please, this is related to their new home.
Okay, the home itself.
Right afterward.
And the amount is $4,175. So I guess everyone has looked at it, that should look at it, and agrees it should be released. So somebody want to give me a motion?
Yeah, this is Gary. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a surety release for Bruce Mink at 4788 County Road 16, in the amount of $4,175.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Gary, seconded by Karen. And this is the first and last release, so all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, we, next, we have a couple double backs on two applications that we had taken action on, but they've come back and asked for some amendments to our, our action. First one is Mr. Fahey, representing the Kieran property at, on North Men Teeth. And if you want to show us, Eric, what the change is, we'll go from there.
Okay, so here's the decision that you guys approved a month ago. All right, so prior to signatures, this is the one that he's talking about, making a change. Prior to signatures, the site plans be revised to depict the proved location of the onsite wastewater system. And an approval from the watershed inspector and Department of Health be provided to the town of Canada. So no plans be signed until the septic system is designed and approved. Jim Fahey would like the planning board, he's requesting the planning board modify that condition. I think that he's looking for the C of O, similar to how the town does it on a number of other plans. Being that Tyler looked at the concept plan that Bill Grove provided, which is essentially this. And his comment was that the concept looks good. Appears that the property can support onsite system, meet some key criteria for the design. But he can't approve it, because it will require the Department of Health. So, you know, is it, it looks like they may be able to get an approval, but not that it is approved, or that there's any guarantees of that.
Well, I, I think the reason we put the condition on that we did, if you all recall, it was rather unique. The, the system's on a very steep slope, you know?
Right.
We were concerned about the grading. It just was a, like I said, a unique situation in comparison to a standard septic system, onsite system. And I guess my other question is, you know, it's, some time has passed since our approval, and in reading Jim's letter, or email, it sounds like Bill Grove hasn't finished the final design yet. And I guess, what's, what's dragging their feet at their end? I mean, it'd be one thing if the application was in and the DEC or Tyler was sitting on it, but it'd be another thing that they haven't completed the design, and it hasn't been submitted. So I don't know if it's.
I agree with you, Chuck. I think you're right. This isn't, we're not holding up the process. This is not the town or the planning board holding up the process. That, this is an issue on their end. That's a, I remember that, that actually got into a pretty heated argument in that, that, I mean, there was issues, if we didn't approve it, he wouldn't do it, and this and that, and, I mean, it's right on the lake, right? Like, this is the, this property's right on the lake.
An septic system.
Yeah, I don't know. If, 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 if he can't think it can be approved, then I don't want to, you know, that would be crazy to, I don't know. Those are my thoughts. I don't think that we need to make a, I don't, I don't think if this is, I think that this is out of our purview, but that's just my opinion.
No, I agree with you. When you talk about the lake and septic systems and steep slopes, I don't think we have the expertise. And I think we need to have it certified that it's okay.
And you have the perfect storm here.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
All the above.
Yes, you do.
So no action need to be taken. It sounds like you guys are generally okay when the condition is written.
Yes.
Yep.
I am.
Yep.
Obviously, Jim is not here to, no one's here to defend their position, so I can take a vote. And I'll make a motion that we leave that condition as is. And it shall apply to the approval as, as written. And if someone will second that, we'll move forward.
Second. Bob? Second, Bob.
Okay, you got a motion, a second.
Can, can you just, can I, can I just go back and re-see that condition as it was, as we wrote it? Let me, I want to sort of look at it again.
Right. Yeah.
Six, right?
Yeah, six. So I, not that I'm disagreeing with you, I'm just wondering if we say, instead of prior to signatures being affixed, what they, what they really want is a building permit, so we, would it make any sense to say before a building permit is issued that we can, because then we can get going on the process, at least by signing the plans, but they can't do a, get a building permit until it's approved? Does that?
I'm not sure that it makes a substantial difference because
Okay.
they'll have to show the grading and everything associated with that design of the septic on the plans for it to be signed.
Okay, all right. I was just kind of seeing if there was another alternative, but I'm okay with, with what you guys just proposed.
And I think Lance had an issue with, yeah, the grading, he was more concerned about the grading as much as anything, and he wanted to make sure that the grading was going to be a shown, and if the, if the septic system had to be changed, then he'd have to come back anyway and have the grading changed to reflect it, so it was felt that, okay, we, we wait until the, everything is approved before we sign the plans, and that way we're not getting ourselves into any squeeze. All right, I, I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So if you would let Jim know that their request was denied, Eric? Another request from Benetia regarding JNT Properties, this is out in the Potter, Potter realm on North Road.
So, this is what was approved by the planning board. The barn, kind of running all the way back. Part of this was to relocate a water line from here and across. Apparently since now and then, they've discovered that there is actually an easement over top of it, which isn't really surprising. And that the cost of relocating the line is prohibitive. So they're proposing to kind of reconfigure the building to this. Still meets setback requirements, it's a little bit smaller in footprint. You know, obviously the grading and stuff would have to be redesigned a bit. Pretty minor change overall.
So that, so with it, the, I guess we'll call it the new addition to the new building, that little section there. That's where the stockpile and, and construction staging area and stuff like that was gonna be, so did they have to relocate or identify that on the new drawing, or?
Yeah, I mean, this is just a sketch. They'll have to redo the engineer drawing. I would imagine they might move that stockpile right there, which is.
That's what I would have thought, yep. So what's that, so what is the next step if we kind of concur with this concept? They'll have to redo the drawings and send them in in accordance with this sketch? Is that what, what the next process step is?
I don't, I really don't think any of that is required. Generally, if somebody's changing the plans, as long as we don't feel it's substantial, they'll just modify the plans and keep with the initial planning board decision.
Okay.
Chuck, you're muted.
We have to consider whether the change is substantial from the approved plans and and I guess if, if we feel it's substantial, then we'd have to come back for review, but if it's considered a minor change, they could make the change and file the drawings for signature. So it's up to the board.
Do we? I wouldn't say it's minor since we're decreasing the size and staying with all, within all setbacks, and nothing else has had to be questioned, so I'd be okay.
We're assuming there's no large drive, you know, bay doors or no entrance exit into that new little section there, I'm assuming, right? It's just four, well, three walls.
Say that again, I'm sorry?
So that new where it says the proposed building reconfiguration, that little section up on the top part there? There's no access for vehicles that are gonna come in or out of that section. It's only down in the bottom.
That I'm not sure of. I would imagine probably not. Seems difficult to get to, but.
Right.
It's certainly not as an efficient floor plan.
I know, it's kind of weird.
But as long as it meets setbacks and it's, it's not encroaching on any any easements, and there's no, no issues as far as our things we control, it's up to them if they want to have to go through a secure this route to get through the building.
It was just gonna be for storage, if I remember, it's not, if I remember, I think it's.
Yeah, I think there were equipment, could have been EDC equipment, stuff like that. I think there was, it was power and that was it, just electric, there was no water, no, obviously no sewer. So how's the word feel? Is it something you want to look in more detail, or based on what you've seen, are you willing to let the applicant make the changes and file the final plan?
As long as, as long, I'm okay. I mean, there's a hydrant over there and there's the existing retention pond, but you know, I, I remember like this was just basically, he wanted to take the stuff that was outside and put it inside of a building.
Yep.
And, you know, it, it seems in compliance, substantial compliance right now, I mean, I'd ask, can we punt this to the engineer? Greg, what do you think?
This is very minor.
Good for you, dude.
You got that, Lisa? Our engineer said it's very minor.
Very minor.
Not very, very minor, very minor.
But think about all the hypotheticals, Greg, like what could happen? I'll make a motion to approve this plan as presented to us.
Okay.
You don't need to motion anything. You don't need to motion anything. No, no approval or anything like that needed from you guys. We'll just tell them.
Well, I think, like we do with the last one, we accept the changes and he can move on, final play, that'd be great.
Allow him to move forward.
Yep. Okay. I think we're just about done here, gang. The training sessions, we've got those coming in emails. I tried to, to sign on for that sexual harassment training, and I couldn't get on, so I, I'm gonna check with Sarah tomorrow.
I, 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 you, you have to use the little menu at the right-hand corner there, though.
Yeah.
But I couldn't get the certificate, so I just snapped a copy of them being so happy that I finished, and I'm, I'm sending her that, because it wouldn't refresh the page, so.
Okay, I'll try again tomorrow.
Yeah, you can do it, but you have to look at the top right, and there's three bars, and it'll say family and whatever, login.
I think it's employee and family, yep.
Employee and family, yes.
And then they, they have you sign in with a password and.
You have to do that, yeah.
Yep, yep, and I'd set that all up. Anyway, all right, we got a meeting on the 22nd. We'll do that again remotely. Anybody else have anything for the good of the board?
I got a little update for y'all.
Sure.
I accepted a new position at the Finger Lakes Career Technical and Career Center.
Okay.
So I'm now, no longer working at Finger Lakes Community College.
Where is that located?
In Flint. I'm the conservation in the town of Seneca. So I'm teaching conservation there with students, to the, to the students throughout the district, and I'm still coaching the Finger Lakes logging sports team, but so the, the impact for the planning board is that my, my schedule is not as flexible during the day as it was before, but kind of an exciting time. My wife and family and I, we all share the same school schedule now, so things are kind of exciting, so.
I think that's wonderful. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations. All right, anybody else have any good news?
Yeah.
I, I don't want to hear any bad news.
No, we do not.
Karen, no bees today?
No, no, I'm bee free.
Bee free? Bee free, all right, bee free.
Well, that's the bad news, I'm not. I got stung five times on Sunday.
In golf?
No, I was cleaning the back, our back and uncovered a hive doing stuff, and man, they attacked me.
Awesome.
I got stung five times. I'm, I'm pretty much over it now, but.
Okay, well, with that, we'll go to the, the new employee for a cue on the motion to adjourn.
Ryan.
Ryan, you're the new employee, Ryan.
Wake up, wake up.
The rookie.
Yeah, thanks. Geez, I don't even know what time it is right now.
Seven.
7:09.
7:09?
I, I'd make a motion only because Greg really wants to be done. Now, now, Greg, we can talk about things if you want, or we could stick around.
I think he left.
Greg is gone.
Really? Then for the record, we're only paying him for an hour. Complete, the town does not owe him any more than an hour.
That's right.
And at 7:09, and I make a motion to approve this meeting. Adjourn the meeting, yeah, thank you.
Good job.
Yeah.
I need a second, okay? All right, okay, folks, well, good to have you sign in and everybody involved, and thanks, Eric, for running the controls, and Lisa, thanks for doing the minutes.
No problem.
And we, hopefully John will be back next meeting, and we'll see you all then.
Thanks, Chuck.
All right.
All right, have a good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.